Welcome to Trib Talk. I'm Jennifer Napier Pierce with the Salt Lake Tribune. Today on the program, we're talking about the controversy on the Salt Lake City School Board. In a space where squabbles usually concern school lunch or property tax hikes, the rhetoric of late has become unusually personal. And joining me to talk about the current turmoil and how the discord is affecting district business is Salt Lake City School Board member Michael Clara. He represents Precinct 2, and he's here in the newsroom. Michael, great to have you. Thanks so much for your time today.
Thank you for having me.
Also in the newsroom, Heather Bennett. She's the Chair of the Salt Lake City School Board. She served for 10 years, and she represents Precinct 5. She's also here in the newsroom. And Heather, welcome to you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And I appreciate both of you being willing to discuss your disagreements. You can join us too in our audience if you've got questions or comments about the dissent on the Salt Lake City School Board currently. You can send those to the hashtag #TribTalk on Twitter and Google+. You can put your comments online right here at sltrib.com or text us to that number on the screen, 801-609-8059. Michael, I'll start with you. For the past month or so, you've attended school board meetings dressed as Frito Bandido, the cartoon that many consider an offensive Mexican stereotype. Why?
Well, like you said, I appreciate using the word dissent, and I feel that my dissent has been criminalized. And the very shortest way of explaining this is that I was in a phone conversation with the Board Chair Heather Bennett about a month ago, and she was offended by some of the things I said. So the next thing I know, at the next board meeting, and since then, a police officer has been stationed. He was always there, sitting in the back of the room, but now he's been positioned in a place where he can watch me and where he's closer to the board members. And we received a letter from Heather Bennett stating that the reason he was posted in that position was because she didn't feel safe with me in the room, so he had to be put in that place.
So this is a protest kicking off from the phone call. It's a protest about the police officer being positioned at the front of the room rather than the back of the room? Or is this about something else?
Well, it's because he was put there because of me, apparently, because of some criminal behavior that I did. And along with that, then, the superintendent tells a group of principals in their monthly meeting that now I'm a threat, and I have to have, that the Board President now has to have police protection for me. So I'm protesting just that stigma, that being stigmatized and branded as a criminal, which is typical of what happens in our society when you're an ethnic minority. I'm the only ethnic minority serving on the board, and I'm the only one that has to have police in the meeting to guard me or protect everyone else from me, which is typical again of what happens to ethnic minorities.
Do you want to go into the content of that phone call? Your version of events, Michael?
Well, basically, the content was, the phone call had to be, Heather called me because of a letter her and the former Board President had just written and distributed to the teachers, demonizing me on yet another issue and misquoting me on some issues that, on issues that happened two years ago when I first got on the board. And they're trying to malign my character by fanning the flames on that particular issue that had to do with school teachers and the rating they received as effective and ineffective or highly effective. And so that's what the conversation was about. And I've heard other people now tell me that the Board President has conceded, "Well, he didn't threaten me, but he offended me." And I would own that. Yeah, she probably was offended, but that doesn't, it didn't rise to the level of having to post somebody who's authorized to use deadly force than to try to intimidate me and marginalize me in the school board meeting.
Let's get Heather Bennett's take on this. I mean, do you dispute any of the story that Michael has just outlined for us, Heather?
As you might imagine, I see it very differently. I do not believe the police officer has ever threatened or intimidated or even spoken to Michael during or after the board meetings. I did ask him to come and sit closer to the board table because, for the first time in 10 years serving on the school board, I felt threatened after the phone conversation. What I have said in many contexts is Michael did not threaten me physically, but he did make threats against me and other board members in terms of what he was going to do to make us feel marginalized and to silence our voices in the community. And he did it in such a way that it was not only offensive, but actually did make me feel threatened. I might also point out, Jennifer, that although it is true that Mr. Clara is the only ethnic minority on the board, he's also the only man on a board of women. And we have many differences among us. I've had served, if my quick count is right, with 13 different board members in 10 years. I've had heated conversations with many of them. Disagreement and dissent is not a problem, but mutual respect or the lack thereof is a problem. I would also say that among the differences we have, Michael is the only person who's not a parent. Michael is the only male, as I said. Michael is the only board member who takes this kind of threatening, and I would say bullying tactic, both in and out of the meetings. So the officer, who, as Michael correctly points out, was there from the beginning of his tenure, and I think as long as I can remember, was asked by me to come closer to the board table. He has subsequently been asked to sit wherever he thinks he can best protect the room. And as Michael knows, at our last meeting, he spent most of the meeting actually in the middle of the room, looking out the window because of a situation that was going on in the adjacent parking lot. He's free to do that. That's what I expect him to do. And I expect all of the board members to treat each other with a sense of mutual respect. We're all there under the same circumstances, under the same auspices. And my job is to try to make sure that everybody is heard and that that climate of mutual respect is observed.
So some pretty charged language going on here. You felt threatened. Michael has said and has written in letters that he feels that this treatment is a form of bigotry. I mean, is this personal? Is it a cultural disconnect? What is it, Heather?
Well, I have to respect his view that he feels that it's culturally motivated. From my perspective, it isn't. It's motivated by the behavior that I have observed and experienced, and it's motivated by a great desire for us to turn our attention to the problems in the district, to increasing student achievement, and not to become distracted and mired in personal attacks on each other or in personal mistrust. And it is not comfortable for me to be talking about this in the media because I would much rather be sitting down face-to-face with Michael and talking about it. But he's brought it to this forum, and I think the public has a right to understand that there isn't just one perspective. Not one of those seven board members would say precisely the same thing if you had us all here together.
Michael, I guess I'll put the question to you. And to be clear, you are both here at my invitation. So again, I appreciate the willingness. And Michael, I mean, talk about, is this a personality conflict? Or do you really see this as bigotry on the part of your fellow board members?
Well, not on the part of fellow board members, but on the part of the Board President. Like, I would take exception to the fact that there's a mutual respect on the board. I've been on the board two years. I'm going into my third year. And anytime I have brought up, and it's a matter of public record, it's not even subject, I mean, you don't need to interpret this. You can look at the board meetings. And we just had a couple of board meetings ago, the Board President said that there's two attorneys in the room now because of me, because of the issues that I've brought up. And in wanting to improve student achievement in my community, there's been a series of barriers that have been put up. This is just the latest of a string of them in terms of what they're trying to do to intimidate me. I mean, I have emails where--
Jennifer, may I please--
Heather, let him finish, and then--
Okay.
Good for you.
You know, emails that I've received through a grammar request where the Public Information Officer gives them a list of things to do to silence my voice, like to kick me out of the meeting, to censor me, to, and I'd have to go look at the list again. But they've actually done a lot of those things, just to try to embarrass and marginalize me and isolate me. But I'm immune to all that. And my concern is that this is the same type of behavior that the school district has been heaping on children of color throughout the years, which is why we're not seeing the achievement that we're seeing on the east side.
Okay. Heather, very quickly, go ahead.
Well, again, obviously, I think Michael needs to be responsible for what he says, and much of what he says, I just think, is absolutely false. We have never silenced him. We have never tried to marginalize him. And I don't know what he's talking about in terms of being kicked out of the meeting. That's never happened. So he tends to paint a very lurid picture that I think, upon examination of the record, of the minutes of the meeting, of the tape recordings of the meeting, reasonable people would not agree with that interpretation.
Again, speaking with Heather Bennett and Michael Clara of the Salt Lake City School Board, currently, there's dispute, there's tension among board members. And we're talking about the effect it's having on the district and the district's business of taking care of Salt Lake City's schoolchildren. If you want to join us, you can send your thoughts to the hashtag #TribTalk. Put your comments right here on the website or text us to that number on the screen. So how precisely do you see that the police repositioning, the costume, is affecting business on the board? Heather, I'll start with you.
Well, I don't think the police presence has any effect on the business of the board, except that I have to respect Michael when he says that he doesn't like that positioning of the police officer. And I have ignored the costume. And I actually think one of our better meetings in the last several months was our last meeting, where we discussed several important issues. I think it does have an effect, the general tension on the board, in terms of people feeling reluctant to bring up issues where they think there might, that they think might increase the level of tension. I would point out, however, that the problem of disparate achievement levels among groups of students and disaggregated by minority ethnicity and race is a nationwide problem in school districts all over the country where Michael Clara does not sit on the board in a sombrero. So the idea that somehow this is a direct result of our attitude toward children, I find deeply offensive and patently false. We've actually made great progress in the last several years in closing the achievement gap in the graduation rate. We're not there yet. We've got lots left to do. But the problems of disparate achievement among students are many and multifaceted, and they don't reside in one response or one area of our activity.
Michael, how do you think that the theatrics have affected the way that you're conducting business, the important business of the city school board?
Well, it's just an escalation of trying to address this issue. You know, I have, like, when I first, when the police officer first moved, I was not aware that the officer had moved because of me. So I had sent a letter in to the Board President explaining that this is offensive to people of color. And we hear it now, and her reaction to this is, "I don't see a problem with it." And neither does the superintendent. He said a couple of meetings ago that he didn't have a problem with the police anywhere, anytime, in the room, for any reason. And this is the problem that I'm seeing as an ethnic minority and one who represents a large population of ethnic minorities is to say, "This is a problem." We deploy police officers, for example, in the school district right now, there's a full-time police officer at Glendale Middle School. But if you go due east, five miles of Glendale, in Clayton Middle School, there's not a full-time police officer. And since this story has been made public, I've had several parents contact me to let me know what's happening at Glendale and at Northwest, that the police officers there are enforcing school rules and that that doesn't happen on the east side. But unfortunately, what I'm dealing with, and we hear it in this interview, the Board President is oblivious to the impact that that has on the community. And then if I say that it's a problem, then it gets dismissed, like this concept of, "Well, this is happening nationwide." But that's not my concern. I was elected to represent the west side of Salt Lake City, so my responsibility is to my community. I'm not going to use what's happening nationwide as a standard to determine if I'm going to address an issue in my own community or not.
Well, to be fair, I mean, if the Board President, if Heather Bennett, felt truly threatened, it is appropriate to bring in extra security, is it not, Michael?
Right. And I agree with that, but I haven't even heard, I have never heard anything, and from what people have told me in conversations with her, she's conceded that she wasn't threatened, that I said nothing to threaten her.
Never conceded that.
And like I said in the board meeting, this has some historical connotations, that 100 years ago in the South, when a white woman said, "Well, he looked at me," or "He bumped into me," or "He whistled at me," then they were lynching that young man because he was a man of color. And that's the same thing that's happening now on the board, and it's happening in our schools. And so I'm concerned, and the reason for the theatrics is to say, "What are we going to do about this?" Nobody wants to address this issue that's happening in the schools with our students, and now it's happening in the leadership. And if it can happen in the leadership, then it gives everyone else license then to do this kind of profiling. And we shouldn't wonder then why we have an overabundance of ethnic minorities in our prisons, why we have use of force with the police happening with ethnic minorities. It's because we're placing ethnic minorities on a collision course with law enforcement.
Heather, I mean, how do you respond to the concern that maybe Mr. Clara and other minorities feel threatened by police presence?
Well, I think that's true in many cases. And what I don't want to do, Jennifer and Michael, is conflate this issue of our police resource officer who acts as security for our board meetings, where he sits in the room, with the very real issue of the police interaction with minority populations in our community and in our schools. Because one is not the same as the other. There is no identity there. And the connection that Michael is drawing, I think, is just a specious one. So let's talk about what's going on right now in our city and specifically in our school district to reduce disproportionate minority contact with the police and to change the role of the resource officers in our school. Michael is--
Excuse me, Heather, do you know what is, why the police officer is stationed at Glendale and not at Clayton? I mean, have you looked at the data? Are there so many complaints or whatever, fights breaking out, that it's required to have extra security at one school versus another?
Well, my understanding is that the contract to have a police officer, a resource officer, stationed at Glendale and at Northwest dates back to 1990. So I do not know what specific incidents or lack thereof might have prompted that. But what I do know is the geography of our city. So we have resource officers at each of the three high schools. And each of those high schools is east of the freeway, right? And 20, it takes 20 minutes for an officer to get from East High School to Glendale, for example. And so part of the thinking is that you have those resource officers closer to where people live, in the community, in those middle schools. Clayton is probably five minutes from east, if that, and Glendale takes a lot longer to get there. So that's been explained to me, that that's the value of having those resource officers at that school, those schools. That said, I think the resource officers do travel. They're on call at elementary schools, and that's true of all of them, all of the ones that are at the high schools and the middle schools. So it's not as though they're there every minute, watching kids and responding to interactions of school rules, although I think that sometimes does happen. But let me tell you about what's going on in the district. I mean, this has been identified, as Michael points out or fails to point out, as a national and a statewide issue. So as he well knows, because he sits on the same District Equity Leadership Committee that I do, we've been looking very hard at our own data about disproportionate identification of minority students, both with law enforcement and for school discipline issues. And we've now unrolled a pilot project for training with the Police Department, with the state office looking at this, at West High School, and we're going to roll it out to the rest of the district, starting in August. And I think we've seen some effectiveness in that. I want to see that happen. I recognize the issues that Michael's talking about, and I think we'll continue to work on those issues.
Michael, any final thoughts before we move on?
Well, just, I think this conversation, as we look at if there's a difference where, my concerns, as a representative voice, these are not personal issues for me. These are issues in where I represent the community. I understand the concerns of the community. And again, I believe that the Board President is just oblivious. You know, I go grocery shopping this weekend, and I have my neighbors hug me and apologize to me and tell me they're sorry for the way I'm being treated on the board. So I believe that Heather Bennett is just oblivious to how they're treating me, what they've been doing, and this thing needs to be addressed, and that's where the theatrics come in. And I believe at the next board meeting, if what people are telling me in the community, there'll be community voices there to echo my concerns since I'm not being heard by the Board President. So we'll have community people there to help underscore what these concerns are.
Here's a comment from Salt Lake City West Side. Heather stated that she wants to discuss student achievement but won't talk about the high school graduation rate of minority students. That's been an issue that you have been bringing up time and again, Michael Clara. What exactly is troubling to you about the current data? And do you feel you're making progress?
Well, what's troubling is, when I got on the board, we had a 52% dropout rate of Hispanic students. And then the following year, those numbers improved drastically. Then when I find out that we're using, we have three different, four different sets of numbers. And one set of numbers will count only 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and another set of numbers, we only count three of the four high schools. And so when you monkey around like this and then you compare them, you will have improvement. But the improvement is not anything substantive. It's just a house of cards. And that's what I'm objecting to, that if we're going to talk about improvement, let's improve, let's not just mask the numbers.
Heather, a response?
Well, I don't see that as an accurate statement, Michael. I mean, what we've done since 2011, actually back to 2010, is use a consistent method for calculating graduation rates across the state. And if you look, for example, at the graduation, you keep telling people that we have a 52% dropout rate of Hispanic students. And I think that comes, goes back to 2011, when the state was reporting 48% in Salt Lake District. But if you look at the actual numbers, school by school, and the aggregate numbers, they're much better than that in the last three years. So east dropout rate improved for Hispanic, Latino students, 61% to 79% in 2014, 57% to 82% at Highland, 66% to 71% at West, and 22% to 50% at Horizonte, which is our alternative school. So there is real improvement, and it's not a shell game, and it's not numbers reported different ways. You can look at numbers all kinds of different ways. But the actual, if you go to the state office's website, you will see data back to 2000, you can see data back to 2010, calculated exactly the same way for all of our high schools, for the charter schools, and in aggregate for our district schools.
I suppose my question for you, Heather, is this going to be a continued priority for the board? Even though you are making progress, you're on the right trend line, is it still top of mind?
Absolutely a continued priority and will remain so until we get to 100%. Or probably more realistically, for graduation, you can get to about 97% because every year you've got 2% to 3% of students who are either continuing students in special ed or who are deemed as other completers, who don't graduate on time but do get a diploma. So it's a huge priority. It's something that all the schools monitor, that we monitor as a board. And Michael knows that we have been discussing, as a board, as part of our strategic plan, which indicators to monitor how often and how better to track student progress toward that ultimate goal of graduation. It just is not true that we are reluctant to discuss it or that we haven't discussed it.
Okay. Let's move to the role that the superintendent, Mikel Withers, is playing in this latest controversy. Michael, it's no secret that you do not like his performance. You've asked for his removal in the past. I mean, how would you assess how he is assisting board members as you work through this conflict?
Well, I believe that he's a big contributing factor to the discord that's happening on the school board. You know, I see other school districts as they function, where it just doesn't seem the same here, that he almost seems to enjoy the fact that we're not getting along, and contributes in a large way to that by just always putting up these roadblocks. And like I said in this latest meeting, a couple of meetings ago, he said he's fine with the police being anywhere at any time in the room. But we have a history of this, and I believe what he's missing and what the Board President's missing is that kids drop out of school because of the way they're being treated, the way they feel that they're being marginalized and isolated. You know, our particular district, we're being sued, it's a matter of public record, the ACLU has sued us because of what we did to students at West High and allowed the police to go in, and they start picking the kids of color to take their picture and then say statements like, "Well, we're here because of the quote-unquote 'Mexican problem.'" And then, you know, so here you have, again, full-time police officers on the west side at the junior highs, on the board level, you have the only ethnic minority serving on the board guarded by the police because now he's a threat. And this doesn't bode well then for the people of color in my community, that we just feel like then we're under siege on every level in terms of those that are privileged and in power utilizing the police, or I would say abusing police powers in this way to try to quote-unquote "keep the natives in check."
Very briefly, Heather, since our time is ticking away, do you want to comment on Dr. Withers' performance? What more could he be doing to sort of bring disparate viewpoints and parties to the table?
Well, the board evaluates the superintendent every year. I think we can all improve on the criticisms, on areas of criticism that Michael and others have leveled against us. I think the superintendent is protective of the functions of the board, and he can always improve in his ability to respond appropriately, both in the board meeting and outside the board meeting, to increase productive dialogue.
I hear a couple of comments, one that are sort of related. One from Partier, "Would it be appropriate to show up to the meeting in blackface as the garbage gangster?" A tweet from Jason Stevenson, "Could Mr. Clara be confusing legitimate criticism of his disruptive tactics with racism because board members don't agree with him?" How do you, how do you sort of work through what is legitimate criticism versus what you perceive to be as racism? Michael Clara?
Well, you know, one of the things, even in this instance, when you go back and watch the video where I presented a point of order, the Board President just ignored it. Robert Schules that we go by says that she should rule on the point of order, and then the "I can appeal it to the rest of the board." That wasn't allowed to happen. And I know we're short on time, but, you know, a quick example of just the process not working and not being fair for my community is, last year, we had a Boy Scout come to the board and wanted to rename a school in honor of Rocky Herrera, who's a Hispanic that lived in the community, wanted to rename Parkview after him. And the Board President just refuses to put that on the agenda. This young man has met all the steps and criteria to have this put on the agenda, but between the superintendent and the Board President, there's just no movement on that. And there's nothing, unless we start protesting that. So that's where the protest comes in, is when you exhaust all the regular, fair remedies that should be there or administrative ways that we function, when those aren't applied to me or to my community, then that's where protest comes in.
So what do you want, Michael? What exactly, what would make you get rid of the sombrero and the getup that you've been wearing and put that aside? Because clearly, it's a distraction. It is a form of protest, no question. But I mean, what would sort of quell some of the frustration that you're feeling?
Well, in this particular case, to be treated equitably like the other board members and not have a police officer and be told that the police officer there is because of threats that I made, when I made none. So in order for me to go back to taking that off is to have the police officer go back to his original position that he's been in the last few years that I've been on the board and prior to that, which was at the back of the room, which was in a non-threatening location, instead of right across from me where he's, you know, where he can watch me the whole meeting.
Heather, is that negotiable? Heather, is that negotiable?
Well, I don't appreciate being blackmailed to saying, I'm not going to take off my costume until you move the police officer. I've already described what I've said to the police officer, and he's free to be wherever, in whatever location in the room he thinks he can best protect the room.
It certainly feels like you're at an impasse. I mean, how are you going to move beyond this to actually focus on the issues, the important issues that are before you, that you're obligated to deal with? And Michael, I'll start with you.
Well, this is an important issue. You know, as an ethnic minority on the board, this is extremely important because this is part of the marginalization that happens when the police are being abused. And I fault the city to some degree on this too, for being complicit in this. The mayor is aware of it, the chief of police is aware of it, and now, you know, I hear the president saying that it's up to the police officer. Well, then, you know, it's hypocritical then for the mayor and the chief of police to be going throughout the city, having forums about use of force, when they can allow a police officer then to be in a meeting to intimidate an elected member of the board. When you look at-
Once again, there has been no use of force.
When you look at the makeup of the city council and the school board, I am the only ethnic minority on those local forums, on that very local forum of government that's an ethnic minority. All the rest are Caucasian, yet I'm the one that gets singled out that's requiring a police officer to stare at me the entire meeting.
Go ahead, Heather.
Once again, there's been no use of force in our meetings. So you're conflating, Michael, one problem with another problem and trying to make a relationship that just isn't there. All of your litany of complaints have answers, and I would be happy to sit down and discuss with you. I can't go into the amount of detail that would be required to talk about points of order or requests for renaming schools. All I can say is that I have a long track record of working for all children in the Salt Lake City School District. And my worries about Michael's behavior are not about where he lives or how he looks, they're about the way he behaves. And I think the only way to get past this is to, again, refocus on those issues. We have a strategic planning process that's underway that will yield, we hope, a blueprint for activities the next five years to improve student achievement for all groups of students. And we have lots of important decisions ahead of us in that context and in contexts that come up on a yearly basis and a monthly basis. So all I can promise is that I'll do my best to focus the work of the board on those important issues.
And Michael thinks that this is an important issue.
Absolutely.
Is it going to be on the agenda for, up for discussion, Heather?
The issue of how Michael feels he has been treated on the board?
The broader issue of law enforcement and the perception that students have to feel safe versus-
Oh, I imagine we will, in fact, discuss that. As I just mentioned, we've been discussing it in small group meetings, trying to gather the data, trying to implement a state-created model for teaching administrators what policing is and for teaching policemen what adolescence is, so that their contacts with students can be more informed and more productive. And that will continue, and if Michael would like a board discussion about that and those efforts, I'm happy to accommodate that.
Unfortunately, we're going to have to leave it there. Our time is up. Heather Bennett, Michael Clara, from the Salt Lake City School Board, thank you very much for your time.